Michael, is Tommy back there? Okay.
Tommy's here.
I know he's here, but he's not up here, and it's 8:30.
That's who he's talking to.
Yeah. Lucy, would you get me a Kleenex?
Give me another Kleenex.
Good morning, everyone. I am on, obviously you can hear me now. This meeting is officially called to order at 8:32 a.m. on this June 18th, 2024. Thank you all for being here today. As usual, we will start our meeting with our chaplain prayer and pledges, and we have our chaplain, Gary Marcela Jenkins, here to lead us in both.
We should pray for the city council breakfast and...
Good morning. Let's pray. Father God, thank you for your grace and mercy. I ask you to continue to bless the mayor and all the members of the city council and all that are in attendance. I ask that you continue to watch over our first responders and keep them safe from all harm, danger seen and unseen. Oh Lord, please instruct us, teach us in the ways that we should conduct this meeting. Please counsel us with your loving eye on us. Let our aims in this meeting be aligned with your direction. Let our plans be orchestrated by you. Father, let your will be done in this meeting so that this can be a meeting that is based upon your desires for us. Whatever it is that you want to resolve from this meeting, Lord, let it happen. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
We will now move into the public comment section of the agenda. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, and begin by stating their name and address or single member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Are there individuals here today who would like to come forward and offer public comment?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Charlotte Anderson with Keep San Angelo Beautiful, and today I'm celebrating a loan, so I wanted to bring you this book, which is hot off the press that we got last night, and show you a feature story about our kids who published their book. So we got a five-page spread in San Angelo Lifestyles, and we wanted you all to have a beautiful copy of it and make note of all the pages because our rock star, Harry Thomas, is on the very last page. So thank you again for your support and all you do in the community. We did just wrap up a hazardous waste event. I don't have a whole lot of details, just about 100 volunteers, maybe around 300 cars. Fabulous event. The good news is we are still four years and four months accident-free. So, short and sweet, thank you guys, and y'all have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
My name is Sylvia Martinez, and I live at 818 San Jacinto, and I'm in Harry's district. And I'm glad that I'm here.
Welcome.
Yes. I came to talk about cleaning our town. I can't come very often because I'm ill. I came today because I see that y'all want to work about parking. Yes, it's very important, but I think it's very important for us to clean our city first. Our city, our houses is filthy. My block is filthy. I live in a filthy, I live close to, in a block that needs, my street needs to be cleaned. I wonder if I've come and told you all that somebody is not doing their job. I come again because this lady is doing something about it. What is the city of San Angelo doing? We're getting cats thrown in my block, cats. What can I do? I can't get them spayed, I can't get them neutered because we have, sometimes I have 10 cats in there. So what am I supposed to do? You know? So I'm here for the fact is that I'm doing my job. I clean. I had to tear a tree the other day, ma'am, because it was on top of my roof. The neighbors, they have lots that they don't take care of. They don't clean them. I have to pay for that. My other neighbors, they don't clean. I think it's more important that you notice that y'all have to clean. There's trailers. Do they have a permit for a trailer park? I asked that. Do they have a permit to have so many boats? They have to have a permit for everything in this town. So before you all start about all this, this and that, please, let's clean our town because that is a focus of all of us when people come. So thank y'all.
Thank you for being here today. Further public comment? Well, we want to start this morning by congratulating Travis Griffith in becoming our new chief of police. I don't know if he's here today. I don't think I see him, but I want to thank both candidates for doing a great job, positive upbeat election campaign, and congratulations Travis on winning the chief of police position. With no more public comment, we will move on to the consent agenda. I will start with Larry. Is there an item you'd like pulled, sir? Karen?
No, ma'am.
Lucy?
No, ma'am.
Harry?
No, ma'am.
Tom?
Nothing to pull.
Tommy?
No, ma'am.
With nothing to pull from the consent agenda, may I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
So moved by Harry, seconded by Tom. Any public comment on any items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing no nays, the consent agenda is approved. We'll move on into our regular agenda for today. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item A is consider the following items related to the solid waste collection contract and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. One, approval of amendment to the solid waste collection contract. And two, first reading of public hearing of an ordinance amending Section 88.017, charge for collection of garbage and trash. Patrick, you are standing and waiting to present.
I am.
Thank you for being here. You're on.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. We are here this morning to discuss with you an extension of the existing solid waste collections contract. That contract was executed back in July 25th of 2014. It was a 10-year contract, which means that the initial term is expiring at the end of this month, or end of July 31st of 2024. In that initial contract, we have two options to extend. We have the first one, an eight-year term, and then after the extension of that, we have a subsequent two-year term that's on the table at the end of that initial eight So as I said, we're here to ask for your authorization to extend that contract for the eight-year option. In that extension, there are a couple of amendments that need to occur along in that contract. The first one there, first of all, it is merely a housekeeping item. The initial contract had a 90-day term of notice to provide a notice of extension. We were talking back and forth and negotiating, so that 90 days, we've exceeded that 90-day term. So this language just clearly, just simply clears up that and provides us an opportunity to provide notice without a day restriction on that. Secondly, we want to exercise that eight-year option, so we'll need to amend the terms of the extended contract. So the new term with y'all's approval will be August 1st of 2024 through July 31st of One of the options that we wanted to do in this extension from staff's perspective is we wanted to get that customer service center back to San Angelo. At some point during the initial term, that customer service center was moved to Arizona toward a nationwide customer service center, and what we found in the feedback that we got from the citizens is it wasn't necessarily effective there. There were some discrepancies and whatnot, and some issues in communication back and forth. So we, as staff, required that Republic step up, add a couple of individuals, and add that customer service center back to San Angelo to be housed here in San Angelo. So we will have a local customer service center with this extension.
When will that be done?
So at the initial term of the contract, as far as I know, as soon as y'all approve, I'm sure Republic will get those wheels turning and try to find those individuals to get all that set up so that it is effective at the start of the new contract term. Another thing that we wanted to tweak in the extension is we want to designate a $10,000 annual contribution to K-SAB. Right now, Republic is currently obligated to provide 10 $1,000 scholarships to graduating seniors. Unintended consequences with that, what we found is that since Republic is not a non-for-profit, that those recipients are actually receiving a tax statement on that contribution. So we, as a city, required that when we set up this contract in 2014 as something to give back to the community. Unfortunately, both between a lack of applications as well as those that did get the $1,000 is getting, or having to report that on their taxes, we felt like it would be better served to give that $10,000 and have a direct contribution to K-SAB, which is providing a tremendous benefit in our community already. And then finally, as the final kind of term of the amendment or the extension, is we got to make those changes to the billing and the payment terms. The tables that were listed in both the ordinance and the contract are expiring at the end of this term, so we need to update those. One of the things that's going to be going away in the extension is the recycling tonnage fee, so that, it's technically called the adjustment for recycling services. So that's that 50 cents that is placed on the bill for our lack of recycling tonnage. So that is going away in this new extension, so that 50 cents will not be there anymore. Additionally, like I said, we need to update Exhibit H, which is the fuel surcharge table. The fuel surcharge table was a table that was put in place for any time that the average diesel price exceeded $4 a gallon. There was an additional charge that Republic could request and implement on the bill for the following year. We have actually used that twice in the last 10 years, so we wanted to update that Exhibit H, fuel surcharge table. In that negotiation, we did get that benchmark moved from $4 to $4.50, and we also got that multiplier reduced by 3%. So the benchmark is higher, and the impact is lower. So we feel, as staff, that that was a good move. We need the fuel surcharge table on there, just because fuel is volatile. We don't know what it's going to do, and it can have a huge impact on this type of service. But we wanted to also make that where it was at a place that we, as staff, was comfortable putting that $4.50 at. Over the course of the last 10 years, we have not hit that $4.50 mark, just for reference. Finally, we need to update Exhibit F, which is the actual billing rate table. So what you'll see is an extension of that for the next eight years, and update to all the residential and non-residential billing rates in that. So, for example, on August 1st of 2024, your new residential rate is going to be $19.87, and just for reference, a non-residential four-yard container, as of August 1st of 2024, is going to be $151.33. I think it's important to note that the $151.33 is exactly what your commercial, non-residential businesses are paying right now for that same container. So that price is going to be stagnant for the first year of the term of this new contract. The residential rate, though, like I said, will be $19.87.
So when you say the non-residential four-yard container will be the same for the first year, what happens after the first year?
So after the first year, there is an increase. We, as staff, I told you, alluded earlier that we were sitting at the table and negotiating back and forth. One of the items that we negotiated down to was a very minimal increase from the 2.9% annual increase that's being assessed to all of the collection charges right now to a 3.5, so a mere 0.6% increase in that annual rate. Just due to inflation, I think everybody's well aware of what the inflationary terms have gone. We feel it from the city as well as the contractor feels it, so we feel that 3.5, that minimal adjustment was warranted through our negotiations, especially since we got that customer service center, so they're going to have to gear up and pay for that back in the city. And we got that fuel surcharge table, like I said, that we've utilized that twice. We don't expect to utilize that in the next eight years, but if we do, it's there. But we did get those terms negotiated in addition to that increase.
So, yes, go ahead, Lucy.
I just wanted you to make one thing clear, Patrick, because I'm sure people heard the recycling tonnage fee will be removed, but some people might have heard recycling's going to be...
No. So the services moving forward are exactly as they were. So you will still have every other week recycling, every other week bulk collections, and one free dump a month out at the landfill. I do want to go ahead and state, though, one of the improvements that we made to the citizens' free dumping program over this last term is we are now digital out there, so you can use your digital bill on that, and in fact, it doesn't even need to be your current one. It just has to be a copy of your bill on your phone with that barcode. They'll scan it, they'll see that you're free or available for the current month, and then they'll let you dump for free out there. So that's a huge benefit that I think the citizens are enjoying and will enjoy moving forward as well.
So repeat the delivery. So when does bulk delivery happen, and when does regular delivery happen? And when does recycling pickup happen?
The regular collections in your, just regular trash collections, will happen weekly, one time a week. Recycling will happen every other week, and then on the off weeks, you will have a bulk collection opportunity where you set out up to five cubic yards on the curb, and it will be hauled off as part of your normal collection service.
How are we, as a city, doing on recycling?
We are, we stabilized with what we're doing. I think those that are going to recycle are recycling, those that aren't going to recycle aren't going to recycle, so we've stabilized, we've gotten very steady. Obviously, we didn't hit that, the amount, the 500 tons that we wanted to hit at the initial onset of this contract, but with recycling being a brand-new service in San Angelo, we really didn't know what to expect. I think we're doing well for what San Angelo is. We're kind of in line with the industry, but a single-source recycling stream is a huge benefit to everybody versus the other option is you sort everything out and you have multiple containers at the curb, and you're having to do all of that sorting yourself. So we're doing well. I think we are making an impact, but we're just not at what we initially thought. So that's why we wanted to do away with that 50 cents and let those that want to recycle recycle, and those that just aren't going to, not let everybody be penalized for those that just refuse to change.
Has there been an ongoing public comment or training or an attempt to get more people on board with recycling?
We absolutely do. I mean, we have a guy out there on the street every day that's helping educate individuals that's going through and kind of monitoring those services and those recycling cans. Republic is required to let us know if they see contamination in a recycling bin, and our guy approaches that, gives them an education flyer, lets them know. We do have a three-strikes-and-you're-out rule on recycling, so if you just continue to contaminate, we will remove your recycling bin, just because it ruins so many other people's attempts with that one deficiency, if it does get mixed in there. So we do have this three-strikes-you're-out rule, but we do really try to proactively let people know and educate people exactly what should be recycled and what can't be recycled.
I'm going to see if, Larry, it looks like you have a question.
We've discussed this previously, but I wondered if you could explain the difference between the current residential billing rate and the one that's proposed.
Yes, so there is a slight increase to the billing rate. So right now, the existing rate that the citizens are paying are $18.18, and so effective August 1st of 2024, it'll be $19.87. So the citizens will feel an effective change of 89 cents on their rate come August 1st.
Does that minus the 50 cents?
That is inclusive of the 50 cents, so that 89 cents, the $18.18 includes that 50 cents right now, so yes, it's inclusive of that.
Other questions at this point in the presentation from Council? All right, continue.
So with those changes, like I said, the ordinance and the rates are actually levied by ordinance, so we need to update the ordinance as well. And so the second item, item number two on here, is just simply repealing and replacing appendix A, the fee schedule for solid waste collections in the actual ordinance. So this will take two readings to get done. Today will be the first reading of that, and hopefully July 2nd will be the second reading of this ordinance change. But this is simply just the reciprocal ordinance that supports the contract changes in those fee tables that are in the contract.
Okay, one last time, is there a comment or question from Council for Patrick? Go ahead.
Patrick, you mentioned that the initial goal for recycling was 500,000 tons.
Right.
Correct? And that we haven't met that goal? Can you tell us where we stand?
It's 500 tons a month was that goal? And so we're hitting anywhere from that 300 to 400 range right now. Every once in a while, we'll dip down into the high twos, but we're averaging about 300 or so tons every month.
And that's a lot concerning, you don't recycle bottles.
That's...
The biggest weight we have in trash is glass bottles.
Is, right, correct. And there's just not a market for glass. I mean, any recycling market will tell you that it's, it's just, there's not a market for it, so...
All right, with that, then, may I have a motion for approval of the contract amendments and the ordinance amendment?
So moved.
So moved by Harry, seconded by Lucy. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Again, I'm Jay Howard, Texas Disposal Systems at 720 North Buchanan. I just wanted to make the case again that, you know, it's been 10 years since the previous council approved the contract that's up for amendment and extension today, and at the time, that was worth easily well over $100 million. An eight-year extension, you're looking at green-lighting $100 million extension without testing the market. And as a competitor in the market who believes that our company has a lot to offer, the citizens and businesses in this town, a lot of value that we could bring to the table, we would just ask to get a shot, to show the city. So my ask would be that the city consider a shorter-term extension that would give the city the opportunity to seek competitive bids for a service that entitles so much value to be taken, you know, in the form of rates from the citizens over such a long period of time. So I appreciate your time very much. You all have a good rest of your morning.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Anna Bartas, Single Member District 1. I'm just here, I know that the tonnage, if we did recycle glass, that would certainly meet the tonnage requirement, and since we're not recycling glass, I know other communities do recycle glass, and so I'm wondering, where do they send that glass to? If he says there's not a market for it, other people have found a market. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? With that, we'll take a vote. Those in favor of the presentation on the contract extension and changes within that contract extension and the ordinance amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none being opposed, we will approve item A.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Item B, consider awarding the purchase of Fleet and Fuel Management Systems and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. One, consider awarding RFB #25-04-022, do I have three twos? Two, of North Carolina Sheriff's Association to Chevyn Fleet Solutions LLC, in the amount of $41,650 for fleet management software implementation, and $64,467.60 annually for software maintenance and support utilizing a total of $106,118 from Fleet Services fund balance. Two, consider approval of Sourcewell Contract #02920-JFA to JF Petroleum Group in the amount of $80,892.65 for fuel management and tank monitoring systems, hardware and software installation, utilizing Fleet Services fund balance. And Ryan, you are on.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Ryan Kramer, Senior Fleet Manager. Just to set the stage real quickly for why you're seeing this item, two to three years ago, we were notified by our current provider for fleet management software and our fuel management system that our increase in annual costs would go up drastically. So at that time, we began researching new options. We had been a little behind in the times related to technology with our current system as well, and so we were starting to look for a new updated option, and then when the cost started changing as it did, that became a greater interest. So we've been researching since that time to find a new system that would accomplish both of those tasks for our organization, and we believe that we've done that. The first part of this item is related to our fleet management software. It is the system that we run reports, we manage all of our work order system through all of our data that we're able to present to management or council related to the fleet. This is the system that is seeing the biggest increase in the charges, and so what you're seeing here is an implementation cost and an annual license fee. The annual license fee that's shown is very similar to what we paid today, paid last year, excuse me, for our current system, and so this particular system will be locked in for a five-year term, which is very attractive. So the total for this portion is $106,000, and we expect, as it relates to just this piece, to see a savings over the five-year term of that contract, just over $50,000 as it relates to this piece of that puzzle.
Is that because of the annual license? When you say it's similar to the current one, what does similar mean? Because similar is not a dollar amount.
In February of 2024, we paid our current provider just over $62,000 for our annual license, and that amount will increase to that provider by 10% annually. So as we compare a 10% annual increase of our current provider to a locked-in amount of this provider, we're expecting that savings of just under $60,000. The second piece of this item is for fuel management and tank monitoring, and... The second piece of this item is for fuel management and tank monitoring. And let me first say that this is also on here because our current provider also manages fuel along with our fleet management program. And so since they are proprietary and they're together, if we're going to move out of one, we must move into the other as well. So fuel management is the system that maintains our inventory, persists with transactions for our operators, and does a few other more minor details, including reporting and billing, things like that, specifically related to fuel. The tank monitoring system is the system we must have for TCEQ compliance that monitors for any leaks, levels, and any other tank issues. So these two systems, while our fuel management system is tied to our current provider, the tank monitor system is not. However, it is very aged, and this was an appropriate time to put them all together so that we have a system that works together seamlessly. So we would have been seeing you with potentially some tank monitoring equipment shortly anyway because of some challenges we're having. So this was a perfect time to do it all together. And so the cost for this piece is eighty thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars, and it includes the installation and the hardware for this piece. Note that the annual fee for the fleet management and the tank monitoring systems will be paid for out of our traditional operating expense as they are now, except for the first year of the annual expense of our fleet management. So the numbers you see at the bottom for the fuel management and tank monitoring, those will come from our operating budget, not from fund balance.
When we talk about the information on the previous slide and this slide as well, are those dollars and those, that information effective October 1? Or do they become effective immediately upon our approval today?
Yes, ma'am. They would be, they would be effective as soon as we sign that contract, which will be shortly after, if approved today. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Quick summary, we are asking for approval for the fleet management and tank monitoring fuel management systems. We'll be using fund balance, if approved, to pay for the implementation and first-year costs related to these things. And then subsequently, our operating budget after that.
Do I have questions or comments? I'll start with Harry and then move down the line.
Thank you. Ryan, how old is our present system?
Just over ten years old. I think we've had a really good run. Technology advances so quickly that ten years was great. We did well with what we had.
Yeah, ten years on software is way out there. So, thank you.
Tom?
Ryan, just a quick question. On our tanks and our fuel systems, I know from previous job experience, the monitoring and the, and the care that we're required to do to take care of that, do we have any underground tanks left, or is the majority of what we have underground?
Yes, sir. Our, our main fuel site over on St. Anne Street is three underground tanks. They are aging. We, we hope that in the somewhat near future, we'll be addressing those things with y'all to rectify that. The fuel site at the airport isn't above-ground tank.
Right. So that would be my suggestion. If y'all look at this going forward over the next few years, looking away at getting rid of the underground and moving to boatground. Thanks, Ryan.
Just all tax money.
Yeah, I know. Which you can afford.
Yes. All right, and Tommy?
Ryan, does this, to Harry's point, ten-year-old software, does this include updates along the way during this, this contract so that we don't get as far behind as we are now technology-wise?
Yes, sir. One of the benefits of this current provider, the requested provider, is that while it does include the annual license fees, it also includes any new technology or advancements that they make within the software. So yes, we would be updated along the way, but also if they came up with a new system that was part of their software, we would have full access to that without an additional cost. So that's another big benefit.
Good, good. Thank you. That's all.
Further questions or comments from council? Okay, so, continue, or are you through?
That's it, ma'am.
Then what we want is a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
So moved by Tommy, seconded by Larry. Public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, opposed, that is passed, seven to zero. Thank you very much, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Item C is first reading and public hearing of ordinances for the following cases. CP two-four dash oh-one, a request to amend the comprehensive plan, changing from commercial to neighborhood center, being point six-one-three acres located at eight-sixteen Caldwell Street. And two, Z-two-four dash oh-three, a request to rezone from the heavy commercial zoning district to neighborhood commercial zoning district, being point six-one-three acres located at eight-one-six Caldwell Street, west of the Texas Pacifico Railroad and Caldwell Street. And Aaron, you are on.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. This morning, we have this first case that is a comprehensive planned amendment, as well as a rezoning on this property here, right here that you see on Caldwell. It is to change the comprehensive plan from a commercial base to more of a neighborhood center base, so a little less intensity. It is right next to a church, and there are some residences around. And it is to rezone the heavy commercial zoning to a neighborhood commercial, a little less intensity as well. This is in SMD four, Lucy Gonzalez, in the Paul Anne Neighborhood. You see here, everything kind of to the east and southeast starts the manufacturing area. There's a small little chunk of heavy commercial, and then you see the RS one here to the left, as well as some other stuff there south of Caldwell. The proposed project right now for this property is a daycare, which would be very complementary to the, to the church that is here, as well as the neighborhood, and even the industrial areas that are adjacent to it. You can see in our vision that, of course, the area to the south will turn potentially more commercial. The transitional, the brown area, is actually kind of a transition between all of this neighborhood and to what we're kind of more of an industrial area that goes out to the wool processing plant, the railroad area, and even Lone Star Beef and those areas. And so this might be a very good place to allow that childcare to come into, to be a supplement to the church, as well as to the neighborhood, as well as folks that are going to work out there that maybe they need to drop their children off at that daycare. We did mail out notifications. Twenty-four of them went out. One was in support, zero in opposition. This did go to the Planning Commission in May, and they did recommend approval of a vote to six of zero. City staff is recommending approval of changing the heavy commercial zoning to a neighborhood commercial zoning and the comprehensive plan from commercial to neighborhood center. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Lucy?
I don't have any questions. I haven't gotten any kind of negative feedback or anything on this. So for that, I will, go ahead and make a motion to approve this presented.
Let me see if there's any other questions or comments before I take that motion. Any other questions or comments that would like to be made? Larry, would you like to make one?
Yes, what is that property to the right-hand side of the proposed daycare?
That's a good, great question. We're not exactly sure. It's been listed as industrial before. There's been times in the past it's been vacant. It looks like it's being used as maybe some automotive repair at the time right now. But it really doesn't have a solid occupancy that we could determine at this time. Now, it will retain its zoning, so it would stay in that heavy commercial. So it could be a heavy commercial property, which allows for like automotive repair and higher intensities than that. But the, there is a plan that there would be a fence along that eastern property line, and that's going to help things for the development to move forward.
Karen, do you have a comment?
No.
Okay, so when you say there's going to be a requirement for a fence, is it, is it a transparent fence? Is it?
It would be a privacy fence.
Okay, thank you. All right, there is a motion on the floor, and there's a second by Tommy. Any public comment on this zone change? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll take a vote. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, all yays, ayes. It passes seven, zero. We will now move on to item C, no, I'm sorry, item D, first reading and public hearing of ordinances for the following cases. One, CP two-four dash oh-three, a request to amend the comprehensive plan from commercial to neighborhood, being point three-eight-six acres located at seven and nine East Twenty-seventh Street. And two, Z-two-four dash oh-four, a request to rezone from general commercial, heavy commercial zoning district to single-family residential zoning district, being point one-nine-eight acres located at seven East Twenty-seventh Street. And Aaron, you're on again.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. This one is one of those common sense decisions for our planning staff. There's a property right here. You can just see that it's vacant. It's not really being utilized in its current zoning. We have a person that has come to us that wants to build a single-family house there, and so that's, that's what we're really doing with this property. So it would change the zoning from a general, a CGCH, to a RS one, and it would change the commercial to more of a neighborhood, which is reflective in a few more of these maps. It is one point nine-eight acres in SMD four, Lucy Gonzalez, in the Reagan Neighborhood. But here, you can see Chadburn is that major corridor, and, you know, there was a time in 2000 that it was just kind of painted a certain distance on either side of Chadburn that would turn commercial. Well, twenty years have, almost twenty-five years have passed, and that has not taken place for this property. You can see that this other property is also labeled as commercial, but it is acting as a single-family house and has been for many, many years. You can see the neighborhood to the right, and then you see the zoning map where just a little bitty sliver of it is zone commercial. They will need that area to just kind of change that. And so we thought it would be smart to go ahead and change the comprehensive plan for both of those lots, bringing in the neighborhood, and change the, the zoning from commercial to RS one in that area. We did send out fourteen notices. We did not receive any in favor or opposition. This did go to our Planning Commission in May. They did recommend in favor of six to zero, and we are recommending to change the zoning from general, general commercial, heavy commercial to RS one, and the comprehensive plan amendment from commercial to neighborhood.
We really need additional housing in that neighborhood, so I think it's a positive. Lucy?
I agree, Mayor. Not only that, but like you said, it's been there for a long time. Nothing's been done, so I'm glad to see that something's going to get done.
All right. So I assume that is a motion, and I'll ask for any other comments. So, but we'll take it as a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Karen?
Entitled agreement. It's a common sense recommendation, and I agree. But I think this end of the table is curious what the current use is for twenty-six-twenty-six and twenty-six-twenty, the properties immediately to the left of the puzzle.
That actually went through a revitalization. It used to be twenty-six-twenty, twenty-six-twenty-six used to be a wash-ateria. It has gone through some tiers funding and is now a donutopia. So that's, I mean, I would want to live right behind that.
As long as you weren't washing your way, you could do that.
Right. I don't recall twenty-six-twenty, what the exact use is. I thought it was a car wash, but I could be wrong on that. I just don't remember. It is a car wash. Thank you, Rick. And so, again, those are not super intense uses in that area, and I think residential behind it makes a lot of sense. And I think the person choosing to do that residence knows what they're getting into.
Larry?
Is there any requirement for a fence between those two lots?
The home builder that's building the lot says that they are going to be putting up a privacy fence, so there usually is a requirement between residential and commercial for that privacy fence.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions? Lucy has a motion on the floor. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Karen, I'll second it. A public comment on the item? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes seven, zero. Then we will go to item E, which is the first reading and public hearing of an ordinance approving Z-two-four dash one-oh, a request to rezone from the low-rise multifamily, general commercial, heavy commercial, and general commercial zoning districts to the central business district, zoning district on approximately seventy-point-oh-two acres, generally located and bounded by the four-hundred block of North Emmerich Street, south to the one-hundred block of South Emmerich Street, then east to the two-hundred and three-hundred blocks of East Two-Wig Avenue, then north up South Main Street, beginning at the teen block through the three-hundred block of North Main Street, from the three-hundred block of East Pulliam Street, west through one-hundred, I'm lost already. Okay. Do I turn left or right this next time? Okay, west through the one-hundred to three-hundred block of East Third Street, as well as the two-hundred block of North Magdalen, beginning at College Avenue, and the two-hundred block of North Oak Street, south of Woodrow Street to East Third Street, including individual properties located at one-oh-two North Oak Street, one-oh-five, and one-oh-seven North Magdalen Street, and one-eighteen South Magdalen Street.
Could you repeat that, Mayor?
Yeah. Like I said, I'm totally lost.
My apologies, Mayor, but yes, this is a very large area for the central business district expansion east. As you can see here, the eastern boundary is Emmerich. You have Pulliam and Third at the top. You have Oaks, and then you really have kind of Main Street, and it kind of zigzags in, in through there. And then two, well, really three individual properties right in there that are listed in this. And I'll clear this off so you can see the, it's, it's actually hatched, but it's white area. And here is a planned development that sticks out. That is our Shannon campus, and they have a planned development, and they are not part of this zone change for this area. So they are keeping their, their planned development intact. So the areas that is, are involved, it's roughly seventy acres. It's in SMD three, Mr. Harry Thomas. It's in the downtown neighborhood, and it is extending the CBD zoning that we have here in this area, extending it to the east.
And explain CBD zoning.
Yes, CBD zoning is central business district zoning. It is our most flexible zoning. It is designed for city center, for downtowns, and for multiple uses, all the way from households to low-intensity commercial, retail sales and services, restaurants, bars, multitude of housing, all the way from short-term rentals to single-family housing to duplexes and apartments. And it allows for offices and other uses like that. It does not allow the intensity to get higher than a drop-off-your-vehicle-for-service. That's kind of the highest intensity. And so you'll see a list in your background information, I think I may have have a list on here that also lists some properties that have a little bit higher intensity, and those properties will stay as we, a, a common term is grandfathered, until they choose to change occupancy, some other type of business comes in. Even if they sell their business to someone, it will stay with that type of occupancy. So there's not a change of occupancy with a sale. It's just if they choose to do a different business type. And I'll, I think I have that list for you. So here, our central business district, it is our center of activity for our community. It is where everything kind of meshes together from our cultural, historical, economic, and recreation. I mean, we have the beautiful Riverwalk. We have our historic downtown. We have our cultural features throughout our, our downtown and area. And really, when you're coming from the east side of San Angelo, Main Street is one of those main corridors that comes into our downtown. Even I've used it a number of times when I lived in Abilene. Would come to San Angelo for different things. Main Street was that first exit. You'd come in Main Street, you'd get into downtown very easily. And so we want to make sure that that area matches our central business district thought process and allow those types of businesses to develop in there. This is an area for all citizens and visitors to celebrate, to commemorate, and educate the next generation. So it really is that cultural mix of what's happening in our downtown. We have lots of festivals that are held in downtown. This area kind of feels like they've kind of been neglected by downtown, and this is a way to bring them in, bring them a little closer, and, and help them celebrate what is, what a downtown really should be. And it is the heart of our community, is what the central business district is. On the left side of the screen here, you see what the vision plan was. This vision plan has been updated in 2003 and 2006, and has been focused on downtown, of expanding our downtown into that kind of geographical area where you see with Main Street there on the east, Houston Hart at the north, and our North Concho River that kind of winds its way through. Now, we're taking in those red areas, those areas that are outlined in red, I should say, into the central business district. You can see on the right side, the multitude of zonings. Now, a lot of it is, this kind of orange is RM1, so allows residential. Now, some of those properties are not residential in nature, and so they'd be pre-existing, and the central business district matches their uses. And then you see the, kind of the different pinks in there, and that's And then you see the kind of the different pinks in there, and that's all the way from general commercial to general commercial, heavy commercial. And so, those areas will be changing to the central business district.
So, eliminating heavy commercial?
That is correct. So, we did notify lots of folks in this area, over 350-plus. We talked to a number of people that talked to us on the phone or may have come in. We did do a town hall at the library in April. We did have, to be honest, a good output of 15 owners in the, that came and visited us. There was probably about 30 people there, so husbands, wives, people that own property, things like that. When we did our mail-out, we did have one mail-out and objection, and we did have one phone call and objection. And the objections were basically, don't tell us what to do on our property, which we, we hear that a lot, being in planning, and so we think this actually gives those property owners more flexibility to do different things today and even in the future. Even after the attendance at the library, we have 18 in support, and so we're very happy with that. Most of the folks at the library, they were cautious but hopeful, so I don't want to say they were just raucous and really waving the banner, but they were cautious and hopeful. They saw the benefits and thought this might be a good move for them, particularly for some of those vacant properties there that they really aren't big enough to build maybe a commercial property, but, oh, well, I could do a duplex on this property. They didn't know those types of things. So, this is a good opportunity to talk with them. But here's a long list of things that the central business district allows, and it starts with kind of the lowest intensity, and then as you move down the page to higher intensities. I'm not going to read all of these to everybody, but I'll leave it up here long enough in case there's questions, because usually the questions are, well, what can you do and what can you not do? So, even as you move through there, you see towards the bottom as the higher intensities. I've always liked this wording of manufacturing by artisans, and that's, that's really interesting. But that's not heavy manufacturing or even light manufacturing. It's really artists that are doing things, that are making products for sale right then. Could be painting, could be metalwork, could be jewelry, could be even some woodworking. But it's not your cabinet maker that's just putting out cabinets, or your people that are building windows. Now, selling things, that's different, but manufacturing, this is a much lower intensity. Warehouse and freight movement, I think as we all know, a history of San Angelo has been warehouse and freight movement, and we anticipate that to be our future as well, as we continue to have goods and services to ship out to other places. And so, that is a use in central business district, and we know we have a good warehouse district just to the, to the north of the downtown.
But most of that is vacant or deteriorating business buildings. I would say you'd be correct if they were being utilized...
Yes, ma'am.
...and they had been rehabbed and looked like someone cared about them.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, that warehouse and freight district, if you will, does not look like someone has invested in those facilities in multiple years. And so, I challenge that line and that conversation because it's not happening.
Okay.
And in fact, would probably be better utilized as downtown living, et cetera, and not warehouse and freight movement. And then the other issue I have is on the vehicle services, the limited, because what we had found in the past, right there on Oak Street, was people working on their cars, and there were more cars than they could get to, and so there were multiple cars parked on the street or all around that facility, and where parking is of high value and need downtown. Vehicles waiting to be worked on seem to not work well, particularly if you get in the more historic business area of downtown. So, that being inclusive has me a little worried, although perhaps no one's going to be interested in doing that, but parking is a premium.
Yes.
And most vehicle service, services require additional parking than just the car that's being worked on.
Yes, ma'am. And this vehicle services, it says limited, it's actually not your, should not be your repair shops. It should be more things that you're just dropping off, an oil change facility, that you're actually staying there while they're doing the work. It could be a tire change facility, similar to the three that I can think of in our downtown. There's a couple on Concho. While some people do drop off their vehicle to get all four tires changed at once or in alignment, they're not hitting the high volume of, well, I've got to order parts for this vehicle, and it's going to sit out here on the lot for a week or two.
They all have parking, private parking themselves.
Yes.
So, they own parking lots, so it becomes less of an issue between the Firestone and the Tom's Tire World, because they do both have parking availability.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is a positive, whether it's in the front or in the back, they have it.
Yes. And new, new businesses that come in would not allow, would not be allowed to have a service center to repair vehicles, do auto body, things like that. They would have to move outside of the central business district and find one of those heavy commercial areas that's adjacent maybe to the central business district, but it wouldn't allow them by right.
And just to be clear, when we talk about central business district, it removes any obligations for X amount of parking, correct?
That is correct.
So, there's no parking requirements in a central business district? So, if you choose to open up a business, you have to consider the issues such as, number one, where are my employees going to park?
Yes.
Allowing for plenty of customers to have access to the parking as a priority.
Yes, ma'am. That is correct. And that is something that all business owners should consider while they're in the central business district, of does that meet their business model or not? And we certainly hope that we have enough private property owners that see the value in starting a parking lot and maybe charging a fee for that. And so, there's always that opportunity in our downtown area. I think we would have some, we would want some design elements in which, if they're in the historic district, we want them to make it look right, or if they're in the downtown design district, make it look right, which is a separate discussion from this zoning. But yes, that is always a consideration for those new business owners in the downtown area.
So, they're aware of that when they start their business, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
The street is for customers, not employees. And also, to just be clear, when you do true urban design, what you don't want is every corner turned into an empty parking lot.
Correct.
Or a full parking lot.
That's correct. We agree with you wholeheartedly.
Okay. Just pointing those things out, because they become issues, and we want to make sure as we continue to develop our historic district, our downtown district, that people are fully aware of all the issues attached to what this means.
Yes, ma'am. So, with that, the Planning Commission did hear this in April, actually. We waited a couple of months to bring it to you guys in April. Planning Commission did hear this. They did recommend approval with a vote of five to zero. Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning from the low-rise multifamily, general commercial, heavy commercial, and general commercial zoning districts to the central business district. With that, I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Harry, do you have any questions?
Do not have any questions. I'll move to approve as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Second, a public comment, please.
Sylvia Martinez. I'm very affected and very disappointed, and I hope you all know what you all are doing, because this affected my business. I have lost a lot of money because of this parking. You all allow parking on the bridge. All these businesses downtown does not have parking, Mayor.
I know.
And there's businesses on, for my businesses, that you have allowed to park on the street, but you all have never allowed my business on Oaks to park on the street. I have lost money for over 20 years, which is not fair. But you now want to pass this law, and I am for it, because these people have businesses that I want them to have a business, because they have the right, when you have a business, to make money, not to lose money, like I have a business that now I'm going to have to, this year, I paid $2,000. I pay stormwater. I pay every, you know, I have to pay for everything that a business, that you all don't let me have it open, because I don't have parking. So, be very careful what you all are going to start with this, because of parking, because you all do not allow me, because this building was built back then, when they did not think of parking.
Are you in the central business district?
Well, I'm just a few blocks...
Because if you are...
Yes.
Parking on the street is allowed.
Well, I'm, they told me I couldn't open because I didn't have no, I wasn't allowed, because I do not. And people have tried to open my business, but they told me I can't open, because I have to have so much parking. But the thing is that there's bars downtown that they don't have no parking, and they have to be fair to everybody, Mayor.
I agree. That's the reason I'm asking the question, if you would sit...
I'm between Avenue G and H, and I've lost a lot of money.
Well, if you'll just sit with Aaron following this...
Well, you know...
And visit with him, because central business district does not require parking. So, if you're in the central business...
They've stopped me all these years.
Okay, so, we just need you to visit with Aaron...
Yeah.
Following this vote...
Because, you know, now...
And work out what the details are and better understand what the issue is, okay?
Yeah. I just want you to understand that if you all are going to pass this law, make these people understand that you give them the parking, because if you all are going to let them pass and not let them have no parking, then they're going to be lost out like I did.
That's the reason I brought the comment I brought up earlier.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Further public comment? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll take a vote. Those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no negatives, all positives on approving this item. It passes seven, zero. That concludes our regular agenda for today. There are, we will move into closed session, which there are no items in the closed session, so there is no announcements or any consideration for executive session. Are there any announcements or consideration for future agenda items? Seeing none, hearing none, may I ask for a motion for adjournment of this regular meeting?
So moved.
So moved by Tommy, seconded by Tom. A public comment concerning the adjournment? Seeing none, we will officially take a vote. All in favor of adjourning this piece of the today's meeting, say aye.
Aye.
We are officially adjourned at 9:33 a.m. We are going to take a 20, 15 to 20-minute break, and then we will start on our next meeting, which will be about our enterprise funds. We are adjourned for a few minutes.